For 14th, 2009, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Yes, Dean Goke.
Here.
Terry Wumble.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
And Lena Rotola.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of August 24th, 2009?
Second.
Changes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We have one proclamation tonight. I'm going to ask Mrs. Wheatridge to please read the proclamation into the record. It's Constitution Week, September 23rd through 2009.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and citizens of Wheatridge. Good evening. Whereas September 17th, 2009 marks the 222nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I Jerry DiTulio do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd Constitution Week in Wheatridge, Colorado, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787.
Thank you. Please give the proclamation to our city clerk. He will mail that to the appropriate authorities. Thank you, Mrs. Wheatridge. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward to the podium and state your name and spell your last name for the record, and your city or your address, please.
Good evening, council members. My name is Chuck Pirati. My address is 7174 West 38th Avenue, Wheatridge, Colorado. I've been a longtime property owner in the city of Wheatridge, approximately 32 years, and a resident for 20 years. I'm here this evening to find out the status of the parking lot on High Court with the address of 7250 West 38th Avenue. I was under the impression that the city of Wheatridge and the council had voted to take the parking lot back from Wheatridge 2020 because they have not developed it according to an agreement with the city of Wheatridge that it be developed by July 9th of 2009. Can anybody tell me the status of this? Did they sign a quick claim deed?
Mr. Young, would you please address that since we had a letter today from Wheatridge 2020? Just summarize it possibly. Or Mr. ...
I can do it. This may come up for action later, but just for information, I can tell you there's a letter dated today from Wheatridge 2020 to the city council. I think maybe you have copies, I hope so, that basically says they'd like some time. I think they're asking for 60 days to determine whether a contract that they're trying to pursue with this property combined with adjacent property would come together, and they express in the letter that this time would enable them to determine if that contract is viable and would therefore serve the purpose for which the property was originally conveyed to the council. So obviously not during citizens' comments, but later in the agenda if ... I would expect you probably want to give me direction on how to respond to the letter.
Thank you.
Well, I don't think that they should get an extension. You know, they have an agreement. They should be held to that agreement, and that's my opinion, and this is costing me money. We've been going on with this parking lot for quite a few years, and I want to bring it to a head. Either we get the right to use the parking lot with other people that are using it at the present time, which is A1 Rental and the Cyclops Street Shop, or get it open to the public and document it. The other thing is that as a longtime property owner, I'm appalled at the reputation that Wheatridge has acquired in the last five years. I offered John Kroll, and his phone number is 303-567-0140. Kroll refused six-month free rent in my building because he was in there before under the business of whispering weeds, and he wants nothing to do with the Nazi regime in the city of Wheatridge, particularly Hitler, aka John Shoemaker. And I don't know all of the particulars of the incidences that he had with the city of Wheatridge, but I've heard from other people that the city of Wheatridge is very, very, very difficult to do business with, and it saddens me that they have acquired this reputation. Closing that agenda, or that part of it, I want to talk about weed control. I have the permission of Laura Clark. Pardon? Well, I have the permission of Laura Clark for another three minutes, and I believe that's nine minutes, Michael. Is that correct?
No, that's three. You have three minutes.
Right.
There hasn't been anybody here to give their three minutes to you.
Okay. No, nothing further there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Please step forward.
I live at 6420 West 46th Place in Wheatridge. I would like to speak to the height and density issues that are going to be on the ballot.
Rhonda, would you please spell your last name for the record?
C-H-A-M-P-I-O-N.
Thank you.
First of all, if someone wanted to, if they have access to the internet and want to go and look at the ballot questions and really try to understand what it really means when they're voting, there are four documents. Two of them, I know, one is 58 pages, another is 56 pages, another one is 28 pages, and I'm not sure about the fourth one, but I think I remember that it totals almost 200 pages. I think it's important that when considering the heightened density issue, the exclusion of these areas and the heightened density issue, that people are aware of how they became to be under the charter in the first place. In 1980s, a city council approved a 100-foot building for the Times Square area between 38th and 44th, and it was a citizens' initiative that got this put into the charter. They felt that strongly about it. Now, talking about that same area of the Wadsworth Corridor, I'm wondering, that's a critical corridor for a city. One block to the east and one block to the west, we have residential areas. How on earth are we going to have a buffer wide enough for these tall buildings with mixed use? I don't see how that's going to happen. It seems that while some people look to the north and think they want more of what Arvada has, and some people look to the south and say we want more of what Belmar has, that people are forgetting to look inward to what Wheatridge has, the uniqueness that we have. We don't want what other people have. If we want to really be something special, we need to focus on what we have as special. And I just want to think that, again, that we need to focus on what we have as special and not try to copy what is around us. I'm not against revitalization. I'm not against a spruce-up, but I am against putting higher buildings and people closer together. I went to a meeting on July 11th, I believe it was, at the business just off Marshall where that was sponsored by Envision Wheatridge, and I believe the urban land development sponsored part of that. One of the individuals was there, and I'm sorry, I don't know if he was a developer, if he was a planner, or if he was a consultant, but his words stuck in my head. He said, "Height and density is the new open space. In other words, you put people close enough together and high enough, we're going to have more space down here, and that's how we're going to deal with the people who might come to Wheatridge in the future." I think it's very important that people consider if that is what their idea of open space is.
Anybody else for public comment? Please step forward.
Can I say something? Laura Clark, sir, I'm waiting.
Well, that's like, it's going to be, it'll be too late by the time she gets her, Chuck.
Do you have a chance to add a couple of the last two questions?
No. I don't think so.
Go ahead.
I'm Diane Robb, and this is my husband, Kevin Robb. R-O-B-B. We reside at 7003 West 35th Avenue, right here in Wheatridge. As many of you are aware, Kevin suffered a stroke a few years ago and lost his ability to speak, so thus I will be speaking for both of us. The purpose of our presentation this evening is to speak about the Mayor's Art Initiative. To paraphrase the Newport, Kentucky Public Arts Foundation, "The impact of public art on a community is priceless and immeasurable. It has the power to energize our public spaces, arouse our thinking, and transform the places where we live, work, and play into more welcoming and beautiful environments. Public art can make strangers talk to one another, can have children ask questions, and calm a hurried life. It enhances the quality of life by encouraging a heightened sense of place and by introducing people to works of art that can touch them as well as to introduce artworks that they normally wouldn't view. Beyond its enriching personal benefits, public art is a true symbol of a city's maturity. It increases the community's assets and expresses a community's positive sense of identity and values. It helps green space thrive, enhances road sides, pedestrian corridors, and community gateways. It demonstrates unquestionable civic and corporate pride in citizenship and affirms an educational environment. A city with public art is a city that thinks and feels. The task of working with public art in any community is fraught with complexities. We are fortunate here in Wheatridge to have a very diverse and active cultural commission to take on this challenge. Of note, I am a member of this cultural commission, and it truly is my honor to serve our community in this capacity. Today, Wheatridge doesn't have the funds to just write a check for public art. So Mayor DiTulio, along with a number of other citizens, has created the Mayor's Initiative for Public Art. This is a privately funded initiative which is under the auspices of the cultural commission. Its purpose is to purchase a Kevin Robb sculpture. Kevin has been a sculptor for over 32 years and is internationally recognized for his monumental stainless steel sculptures. The support for this initiative has been great, and of particular note, I specifically want to recognize Mr. Tom Abbott, Mr. Don Affanti, Councilman Terry Wumble, architect Kelly Brooks, and Samuel Sun &amp; Company, our stainless steel supplier who is located right here in Wheatridge. There has also been a great number of citizens, too numerous to list here, that have already generously donated to the cause. The cultural commission convened an art selection committee consisting of select members of the commission, interested citizens, representatives from the Wheatridge Parks and Recreation Department, a professional art consultant, a sculptor with extensive public art experience, and of course, Kevin Robb. Their mission was to choose the actual design from a wide array of sketches that Kevin provided. Secondly, this committee determined the future placement of this sculpture. It is our pleasure to present to the council this evening the design that the cultural commission has chosen. This sculpture will be soaring into the air at approximately 17 feet in height. The cultural commission has also determined that the new park being developed at 38th and Kipling will be the ideal location for this sculpture. The timing is perfect for the Mayor's Public Art Initiative. A new park right here in Wheatridge, and the funding mechanism in place for a monumental sculpture created by a Wheatridge sculptor. We thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anybody here for public comment tonight? Moving on, we'll go to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? That's what we're saying.
I'd like to add to the agenda an emergency ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission of acceptance processing and approval of any application for a city of Wheatridge permit or license relation to the operation of a business that sells or cultivates medical marijuana.
What item number?
It'd be item number six.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to add item number six, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on the motion to add. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item one is the consent agenda. Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A, award ITB 0929 watchable wildlife boardwalk contract to IBC Construction in the amount of $144,966 for the purpose of constructing a boardwalk at Bass Lake and Wheatridge Greenbelt. B, award OFB 0916 cardio equipment to fitness systems incorporated in the total amount of C, approval of the annual renewal for the ESRI GIS system in the amount of $28,877.32. D, Resolution 46-2009 approving a contract amendment with the Colorado Department of Transportation for Project Number 16413 Pedestrian School Improvements at the 44th Avenue and Miller Street. E, approving a delay in the construction of drainage and flood control improvements for the Arvadas Channel and the Ridge Road Tributary. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the consent agenda A, B, C, D, and E.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by many people on the dais. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item two is Council Bill 22-2008. Councilmember Langworthy.
All right, just a moment. Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 22-2009, amendments adopted by reference to 2009 edition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado and the Model Traffic Code amendments previously adopted by the city, providing penalties for model traffic code violations and making conforming amendments to the Wheatridge Code of Laws. Should I just move to a motion?
Right.
I move that the public hearing for Council Bill Number 22-2009, amendments adopted by reference to 2009 edition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado and the Model Traffic Code amendments previously adopted by the city, providing penalties for model traffic code violations and making conforming amendments to the Wheatridge Code of Laws be continued until February 8th, 2010 at 7:00 p.m. or sooner thereafter, as may be heard in council chambers, 7500 West 29th Avenue, Wheatridge, Colorado, and that Council Bill Number 22-2009 will be considered on second reading at that time.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to continue, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinances on first reading. Item three is Council Bill 25-2009. Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill 25-2009, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Article 6 of Chapter 26 of the Wheatridge Code of Laws concerning trash dumpster regulations. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to adopt Council Bill Number 25-2009, case COA-09-04, an ordinance amending Article 6 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws concerning residential dumpster regulations on first reading and order published, public hearing set for Monday, September 28th, 2009, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Berry voting no.
Thank you. Item four is Council Bill 26-2009. Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 26-2009, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 26-501 of the Wheatridge Code of Laws, off-street parking and loading, COA 0903. Is the motion in order?
Our motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill 26-2009, an ordinance repealing and reenacting Section 26-501 of the Wheatridge Code of Laws concerning off-street parking on first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, September 28th, 2009, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers, and that it take effect upon adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item five, Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce this. If I can find it here. Hang on, I have a second. Okay. A motion directing the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending ordinance Number 1446, Series 2009, concerning the July 20th, 2009 storm building permit fee rebate program. On August 4th, 2009, council passed an ordinance, 1446, providing for a time-limited rebate of a portion of the city's building permit and inspection fees for the repair of damage caused by the July 20th, 2009 storm. Upon further review with the city auditors, the rebate funds may come out of the current revenue account. Is the motion in order?
Our motion's in order.
I move to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending ordinance Number 1446, Series 2009, concerning the July 20th, 2009 storm building permit fee rebate program to delete the condition that the program is subject to an appropriation. Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Wumble. Discussion? Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for some points of clarification, I talked with Mr. Goff today, and in the ordinance, Mr. Dahl, we don't have the date that the rebate application must be submitted, but we do have it on the permitting application that I pulled up offline, and I guess that probably is okay. May 31st, 2010. I just didn't know how we were going to do bookkeeping on that, in that we're going to be able to rebate all the way through the 2010 budget to May 31st. But is that correct, and it doesn't have to be in the ordinance that way?
Well, the guidance on the website, the application form, no, I don't believe it does. I mean, the ordinance sets up a rebate program, and it's, I think, well within the sort of guidelines of the ordinance for then to be implemented in an application that has dates, et cetera, as long as those dates don't undercut the purpose of the program. I'm trying to recall why that date was chosen, but I remember there was discussion about how long it would take for applications actually to, for the storm damage to get processed and sort of through the system, and that date was chosen because it was, comfortably you kind of enclosed all the applications that we were going to get through the term that was allowed. So in terms of, yeah, putting a date like that in the application form, that's an administrative kind of implementing the ordinance decision that I think that I'm more comfortable with. I think it's appropriate to make that kind of decision.
Mr. Johnstone? He wanted to take you back on that.
Yeah, I can just add on to that just a little bit. The date of the eligibility for issuance of permits is into October of this year. Building permits are good for 180 days, so the May 30th was intended to be a little longer than 180 days so that people would have had that done, work done within the limits of their building permit.
Okay, so for instance, if someone comes in October 16th, then they still would be eligible, and they could go all the way up till May to get, I understand the reasoning. Now, I just, I didn't understand it earlier. But the other question, I guess, is pretty obvious. If they come in on October 17th, due to the fact that they can't get service, which is what I'm finding in my neighborhood, that some people are not able to get people to their home, enough roofers aren't able to get that, then they're just out of luck, I guess. That's a pretty rhetorical question, I guess. Meaning if they come in on October 17th, it isn't because the city isn't able to process, and I've been hearing great compliments that the city is doing a good job of processing, it's just that they're backed up. The roofers are backed up right now. They're very backed up. So consequently, I guess we would need to get the word out to get their application in by the 16th somehow, as best we can, to our community, because I'm fearful, I know in my neighborhood, there are people that roofers can't get in my neighborhood, there are people that roofers can't get there till the 17th, and they're out of luck. I mean, it's the roofers, it's not that they don't want to, they just simply are backed up. But I do need to say that I'm hearing positives as far as the speed with which the city has been able to process, it's just that the construction people are backed up a little bit. So, okay, that helps me explain the May date and why we got to the May date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Goke?
Mr. Dahl, if that later date, we need to extend this date due to mitigating circumstances, just as described, that people are not able to fill their contracts due to availability of workforce. That's just a matter of council coming back and making an amendment to this motion and extending that. Will that work?
That's right. You have the power to amend the ordinance to change that date. You created that window sort of intentionally with, and there was some thought went into it, but it, as you recall, we said, well, not on the 20th because, you know, that window was created with certain amount of legislative thought, and you have absolute right to amend it by an ordinance to change that date.
Okay, we have a motion. Any more comments?
I have one more question, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. On the application amendment, it also says the rebate program is conditioned upon and subject to the availability of funds, and the funds, I guess, will be put automatically into our general fund. Is that correct?
The way the program's set up is, we'll be rebating against our revenue line, so any revenues that we've received for other building permits, the rebates will come from that revenue account.
Okay. Thank you. I just, thanks.
No problem. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Please call, poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries seven to one, with Councilmember Berry voting no.
Thank you. Item six, Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an emergency ordinance, an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of any application for a city of Wheat Ridge permit or license related to the operation of a business that sells or cultivates medical marijuana pursuant to the authority granted by Article 18, Section 14 of the Colorado Constitution, directing the prompt investigation of the city's regulatory authority over such businesses, declaring the intention of the city council to consider the adoption of an appropriate city regulations with respect to such businesses if permitted by law and declaring an emergency. Is a motion in order?
I think we need to have the clerk assign an ordinance number and a council bill number.
This will be assigned, we don't have, I'm sorry, I don't have a council bill number ready. I have an ordinance 1453 will be assigned to this.
And is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, well, so, make a motion. Do you have it, give the motion?
Yeah. I did the motion myself, so if it's wrong, I hope the city attorney will tell me that I erred. I move to approve ordinance number 1453, order it published, and that it take effect immediately after publication.
Now, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Womble. Discussion? Mr. Womble?
I was just, I'm going to ask the clerk, could you give me a copy of that ordinance, please? I don't have a copy of it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dahl?
On the effective date, I heard in the motion that it's to be effective upon publication, the ordinance itself provides, in Section 6, that it would be effective upon adoption. Would you accept that your motion says that?
Is it okay with the second?
That's okay.
So now this will be effective upon adoption, which is tonight, right, Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council on the motion.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for the evening. Move on to city managers' matters.
I'm with you, thank you.
City attorneys' matters?
It's nothing unless you want me to address this Wheat Ridge 2020 letter. You're going to do that, Councilmember.
Go ahead if you want.
As council will recall, you directed that a letter be sent to Wheat Ridge 2020 requesting a return of the property at 7150 West 38th Avenue. That letter was sent on September 1st, and we have, and I believe council has copies of a letter back from Wheat Ridge 2020 responding to that letter and saying a couple of things. First, that the property has been encumbered, meaning they've taken out a loan and probably put a deed to trust on, to secure that loan on this property. I don't know how large that is, we certainly researched that, to provide liquidity to the organization, and they go on to indicate that they've been approached by a potential buyer and would like 60 days to determine if a contract is likely to be had. I don't think they have a contract yet, so it's not a matter of closing in 60 days, but it's a matter of saying, we believe, as I'm reading from their letter, they believe that 60 days would give them the due diligence period, they'd be able to determine if the current offer is good, and their request is that the council defer its request for the property to be reconveyed to them pending that 60-day period so they can look at this potential contract. I would say that to the extent the property has been encumbered, and the city were to continue to ask that it come back to the city, I'd be asking, instead of a quitclaim deed, for a special warranty deed, so that we would get the property free and clear of that encumbrance. The quitclaim deed would not get the property free of that encumbrance. That was council's motion last time. If you were to further direct me, I'd be wanting a special warranty deed that matches up more or less with the special warranty deed that the city gave Wheat Ridge 2020 when they originally conveyed the property.
Comments? We want the city clerks, oh, Councilmember Berry?
I'll just make some comments if there's a motion for anything. Just, are you asking just general comments on the city attorney's comments? Okay.
City clerks' matters?
I just have some information on our upcoming election, so citizens should be aware, of course, we have a November 3 election coming up. This is an all-mail ballot election. If you are an active voter, you will receive your ballot in the mail from the county clerk. Something I want to point out and always remind citizens is that active voter does not, you're not necessarily an active voter if you're just registered. You remain as an active voter only if you voted in the last general election. So if you voted last November, you're an active voter, and the county will still send you a ballot. If you did not vote last November, you're still registered to vote, but you become inactive, and you must notify the county if you still wish to receive that mail ballot. If you have not registered to vote yet, you may do so up until October 5th for this upcoming election, and then as, we still get a lot of questions regarding the two ballot, two, actually, three ballot questions that we have on our, for this election, referred by the council. I have put on the, on our city's website, a single document where you can obtain the wording for those questions and the maps that are referenced to in those, so that you don't have to do all the research yourself. You can find a quick link to that from the city website homepage, and it'll go to the elections page, and there you'll find that information. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Rattola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to offer my condolences to Randy Kettleson and his family. His father died about two weeks ago, so I just might as well say that the city of Wheat Ridge sends out our condolences to him. And also, if not aware of, the Kids Night Out program is still going on at the Duck Center after five years, and it's very successful, and I just want to thank Joyce Manwaring and her staff for making this such a successful outing for kids 8 to 13, and I've heard great comments about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Langworthy?
Oh, well, I guess the only thing that I have is, I would like to thank the city for finally redoing 44th Avenue. It is now nice to drive on that instead of feeling like you're washboarding it down the street, so, thank you very much for that. I'm sure all the citizens who drive 44th appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple different things. I wanted to promote the Wheat Ridge Wines and Dines, and tomorrow, let's see, is the date that we can still get tickets for $25. There are a number of restaurants that will be at Copperfields Event Center. It's always been a success in the past, and I wanted to promote that. It's on September 24th, Wheat Ridge Wines and Dines, and you can look on the Wheat Ridge website or on the Wheat Ridge 2020 website and get tickets for Wheat Ridge Wines and Dines. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, and I know I only really need to get two people, but I wanted to get something on the agenda for the study session, but I wanted to talk a little bit. I'm seeing that we'll discuss our 2010 budget on September 21st, which is our next study session, and I remember when we had our last study session with Wheat Ridge 2020 coming, they were talking to us about matching funds that they were going to try to get, and I said, well, what would the next step be? And they said they'd like to come back and let us know how they were doing on, working on some of the grants for matching funds. I wondered if it would be appropriate that perhaps they could be on that study session just ever so briefly. I talked to Mr. Goff, and he said it's a pretty full agenda, but I think it would be appropriate if we asked for them to come back at that study session. Is there a second or third person that would like to?
Is that a motion?
Put that on? No, I just need an agreement that we can put that on the study session. There needs to be two of us to do that.
I'll go along with that.
So we would invite them to come to that study session, then? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That would be okay to, okay, put that on the agenda?
Sure.
Then that's what we'll do. Also, at the same time, perhaps with this 60 days, we could add a motion that we would allow Wheat Ridge 2020 to come at that study session and speak with us a little bit about this parking issue that was brought forward tonight, to allow them, the request of this letter that we did just get tonight, I was unaware of it, that they would request 60 days to provide all parties sufficient time to evaluate the viability of the proposed parking lot project. That is in a state of emotion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right, so we have a motion to have Wheat Ridge 2020 come to the next study session to discuss the property on 38th Avenue, the parking lot, it was seconded by?
I believe seconded.
Was there a second?
Mrs. Stites.
Seconded by Councilmember Rattola. Discussion on the motion to discuss the parking lot the next study session with Wheat Ridge 2020. Mr. Stites?
To me, I, the whole purpose of that was, when we initially did it, they had plans for that corner, to redevelop the corner, build above, put parking below, add twice the parking. That never went through. Their contract basically with the city was up, I think it was, what was it, August 1st?
No, no.
July 15th. They didn't fulfill that. The problem with it is, if we don't get that parking lot back, it makes that building to the west useless because they don't have parking, and I would hate to see that. Now, I would, I think we've written a letter, I think that we should get the lot back now and in future, in the future, down the road, if something comes along, maybe we can take a look at it again. But I think we've written a letter, they've responded, but I don't particularly care for the response, but it just makes sense to get that lot back, because right now we're sitting there with a building to the west that, if we don't get the lot back, is going to be rendered useless because the plan initially didn't work out.
Councilmember Womble and then Sang.
Yes, after reading this letter, just getting this tonight, I'd like to say, Mr. Dahl, when did Wheat Ridge 2020 get notice that this was coming up?
We sent them a letter requesting that they reconvey the land, and our letter to them was dated September 1.
Okay, so they've had it for a while. We're just not getting this letter. The one thing that really bugs me about this is almost as if Wheat Ridge 2020 is just trying to hold on, a last-ditch effort to hold on to some property. If they weren't doing a last-ditch effort, then they would, I think they would kind of spell out and hear, well, you know, what type of development is it going to be? What kind of advantages is the city going to have? Who the developer is? You know, I don't see any of those promises in here, any inkling that they're doing anything with that property, so I won't be supporting this.
Councilmember Sang?
Well, I concur with Mr. Stites and Mr. Womble. They've had adequate time, seems to me, to be able to do something with that property, and now here, last-ditch effort, why they have come up with some developer that is going to do something with the property, and no indication of who it is or what it is, so I won't be supporting it.
Any other discussion before I go to Councilmember Adams? Councilmember Adams?
You can help me, Mr. Mayor, but I remember, and I don't have it in my notes with me, they did come to us, and even, there was a graphic of who the developer was, and I can't remember the name that they were working with, and that they had, and I think you're aware of that. Remember that they, can you help us with that?
Let me pass the gavel here. When, with the previous executive director, there was two plans that were laid out. One developer came through, and the price changed, so that developer backed out of the program. Then another developer came through, and they also backed out of the program. I don't want to mention their names on TV, but there was two developers that was working with Wheat Ridge 2020. Both of them fell short of the goal of redeveloping that site, to my knowledge. The reason why I said a couple of days, weeks ago, that there was already in the process was that Councilmember Stites had brought this forth, that they basically had missed the deadline for redevelopment. They had three years to redevelop that property, and the two developers that they had negotiated with fell through. So at this point, the property to the west needs parking, and the developers that I know of are not interested in the property anymore. Now, what the current situation is, is Wheat Ridge 2020 has put the lot and the building up for sale as one, as one unit to sell to the highest bidder. That's what's happening right now. Ms. Berry?
Well, I'm at a disadvantage here to make an intelligent situation. Talked to Wheat Ridge 2020, so they've been talking to the city about doing some shared parking agreements. Talked to Mr. Parati. Mr. Parati says in the past that part of the reason why he has an issue is that the city took away property from behind him through condemnation, where he had parking, he had parking spaces behind, and he had parking spaces on the front of the street when they redid 38th Avenue, and that the city made assurances to him that he could continue having some on-street parking also, so there's some parking spaces there. The mayor, Mr. Mayor, you've said that you've had conversations about or dealings with this parking lot that I haven't been privy to. I think I would like to have everybody sit down in a room, figure out what's going on with whom, who's had discussions with whom, what promises or have been made, before I can make an intelligent decision. I think that's kind of the fair thing to do. It could be that we could have a win-win here if everyone would sit down and have a discussion about it. If they have a developer on place that will add some additional parking, add a building, do under-street parking, we have shared parking agreements with whatever Wheat Ridge 2020 does with the property. If it was made a condition of sale, we could get a new development in there, Mr. Parati could get parking. If the city looked at, did we make promises to him that we haven't kept? I would like to kind of know all these things before making this decision. I feel like there have been a lot of discussions that have taken place outside the dais that I have no clue what's going on, and I'd like to have a clue before making a decision.
Well, actually, the discussions have been going on since 1996 with Mr. Parati, and there was agreements that never got executed for various reasons. Mr. Dahl has met with him on several occasions, and Mr. Parati about that parking agreements that never got executed because of his situation. But, Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I think that regardless of what went on in the past, what could possibly go on in the future, or whatever, ultimately, it comes down to, when we sold them that lot, it was, what, three years ago or whatever, they had until July 9th to do something with. We specifically put that in there so we could get it, you know, back if nothing, nothing went on, so what I want to do is just clear the slate on this end of the deal, get the lot back, and if something comes in in the future, we'll look at it again. But it's strictly housecleaning right now, and strictly getting the lot back because they didn't do anything by the specific, in a specific time.
Mr. Womble and Ms. Berry?
I would just like to remind everybody that Mr. Parati said tonight that he would like to see it go back to the city. I mean, that's what he came in and said, so I really don't see where you're going with saying that, I mean, what's Wheat Ridge 2020? It seems like he's really upset at Wheat Ridge 2020.
Ms. Berry?
That's not the issue about whether Mr. Parati is upset with Wheat Ridge 2020. The issue is, what's going to happen with that piece of property, and what's in the best interest of Mr. Parati and the citizens and Wheat Ridge 2020, you know? Obviously, you know, people have been talking about, things have been going on from 1996. Wheat Ridge 2020 has not had that property for, since 1996. So obviously, the city sat around with this property for at least a decade or so and didn't address any of the concerns, so I'm not sure putting this back in the city's hands is going to address anything additionally either. I'd like to know the full story behind this before I make a decision. If they have a developer online, that would be advantageous and also allow for Mr. Parati's issues to be addressed, that would be great. If not, then maybe we If not, then maybe we go through, but I would like to know what the history is and what all the conversations have been going on between various parties here outside the dais.
Mr. W, or Ms. Adams?
I would just like to say, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Adams.
That's okay. I agree, I'm not knowing that I disagree with Mike at all, I just feel, I am not in disagreement, I just feel like I don't have all the data either, and I'm reading a letter that I got just late this afternoon, saying that they have a person that is obviously interested. I know that isn't a person that's got the money on the table, but they've been recently approached by a potential buyer to the site, which currently includes both parcels of land, and if we can all be a win-win for the gentleman that was here speaking, as well as 2020, then the city's a win-win, so can we talk about it? I don't know. I'm open for discussion on it, that's for sure.
Mr. Goke?
Well, I think it's, it's pretty clear, council agreeing to a contract, and conveyed this contract to Wheat Ridge 2020, the city did, and we're exercising the contract to the letter of the law. It's that simple.
Mr. Womble?
I personally have had no conversations about this parking lot, so I'd like to start there. And secondly, Ms. Berry, please do not make accusations on this dais that people are talking outside this dais. It's really unacceptable. And I'd like to call for the question.
Second.
Okay, we're calling for the question, that takes six votes to pass. We're calling for the question that exit, that stops debate, so we're calling for the question, please vote.
No, Mr. Mayor, we're voting on my motion.
It's a call, he calls.
No, we're voting on call for the question, which takes six votes to pass, but that'll end our debate if it passes. If it fails, then we can still continue debating your motion.
Thank you.
Motion ties four to four with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, Adams, and Steitz voting no. Councilmembers Sang, Langworthy, Womble, and Goke voting yes.
Well, at this point, my vote is moot, because it takes six votes to pass for call for question, so I'll just vote no on that for now, but now, discussion is still open, so now we're on, we're still on the main motion by Councilmember Adams, which was to move this to a study session to talk about the property on 38th Avenue. We just voted on call for the question, and that failed. Mr. Goke?
Well, I'm going to move for a substitute question, and move that the city attorney conveyed to Wheat Ridge 2020 our right to reclaim the property in whichever form he seems fit. In other words, you didn't seem to think that a quitclaim deed was what we wanted, we wanted a?
Special warranty deed.
A special warranty deed, and so we move forward with a special warranty deed.
We have a substitute motion to move forward with a special warranty deed by the city attorneys. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Womble. Discussion on the motion to, this is a substitute motion, so if it passes, we have to vote twice. Discussion on the substitute motion? Please pull the council.
I'm sorry, I didn't reset your votes. Place your votes again, folks. Motion carries five to three with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, and Adams voting no.
Okay, so we have to vote again on the main motion, as amended or substituted. Please pull the council on the main motion as substituted.
Motion carries five to three with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, and Adams voting no.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Adams?
Um, that'll be all.
I was going in district order here, so Councilmember Steitz, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, I would like to have everybody do, try to do a positive thing for the community, their neighbors, or whatever. I know in District 3, our fall cleanup is done because of the storm, and I don't have any leaves to rake up, but, but anyway, please try to do a positive thing, and especially with wintertime coming, you know, check your neighbors, make sure they're okay, and as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to District 2, Councilmember Goke?
Yes, I'd like to thank former Councilman Ken Seiler and former Councilman Kent Davis for putting on the block party. It was a big event, Big Tenth, it was a bit chilly, I have to say, I was the only one that showed up in cutoffs, so that wasn't too, I thought, but everyone had a great time, it was good food, and I, I'm gonna, I just have to say, those people over there, I think, I was the youngest one there, and, boy, they got the fire for those type of parties, boy, I'm not kidding you. They had the food out, they had everything out. It was really a good event, so my hat's off to District 2 and those people. Thank you.
Councilmember Sang?
Yes, I'd just like to echo Mr. Goke on the block party. I was a little late getting there, but they still were cooking, and people were still eating, and everybody was having a good time. Thanks, Kent and Ken.
Councilmember Berry?
Yes, I received several calls from citizens giving me their input on the budget, and really, the budget is the single most important thing that we do, and so I'd really like to encourage everyone to give your comment on the budget, even if you can't go through the various 300 pages of the budget, but just call your representative and let them know what's important to you in that budget. We're going to have some very tough decisions to make, and it would be great if we could do so with some better guidance from the citizens.
Councilwoman Womble?
I'd like to thank Diane and Kevin Robb for coming in and giving a great spiel about the Mayor's Arg Initiative. That was wonderful tonight.
Thank you. I wanted to thank, in the past, United Neighborhoods for them sponsoring the candidate forum. I also wanted to thank Enterprise Wheat Ridge this year for sponsoring the forum. It's on Channel 8, you can watch that through the election. It's on Channel 8, so please get a chance to watch it. It's eye-opening. I also wanted to thank the neighbors over on Melrose Drive also for their work on the block party on Saturday. We go there every year, it's a great time, and it was a good number of people, even though it was raining and cold, so thanks to those neighbors who took care of that block party, and it was a fun time for everybody. So, with that, I will adjourn.
Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.